Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Police rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I knew there was a Trump supporter in the room.
There you go. Good morning, everyone. This is the Board of County Commissioners' meeting for July 17, 2019. Our inspirational word for the day, "An honest answer is a true sign of friendship." And we have our snoring and grunting dog this morning.
He's grunting. She's excited.
I'm here.
Here you are.
Good morning. Today, we have a female in cage number one. She's available today. She's a little older, but she's still got a few miles left on her. She will go out and be spayed after adoption. And I'd like to mention, we're having an event on August, or July 27th. That's a week from Saturday. And our volunteers work very hard on that, and they're very proud. So, we invite everybody. Thank you. the board business.
Hey, Jen. You're out. King of Wings.
Excuse me. King of Wings, Jen Kennedy with Visit Lorraine County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for having me. I'm Jen Kennedy. I'm the interim director of Visit Lorraine County.
I just want to switch you over.
Do I have to do all the work around here?
Yes.
There we go.
There's a whole bunch of button pushing down here.
Okay. I am excited to be here and talk about the second King of Wings. This year was really interesting, especially since we got to compare it to last year. So, I'm just going to kind of go through the basics here for us. Okay. Our goal, of course, was to raise awareness of casual dining. We do all different types of things. As you know, we do Restaurant Week, and we have Burger Battle. And the King of Wings really hits a niche market, which is some of that neighborhood casual restaurant, trying to get people into different neighborhoods, into their backyard hangout. So, it really, really hits a unique market, and it gets people into some of the most regular places that we visit. And it also helps promote a different price point. As you know, Restaurant Week caters to a higher price point. The Wing Battle really caters to a lower price point. We had our participants, 83 in Chestnut, and that was in North Ridgeville, Brickyard, Bar &amp; Grill in Oberlin, Bootleggers Bar &amp; Grill in Columbia Station, the Foundry Kitchen and Bar in Illyria, Forts Old Town Tavern in Wellington, The Depot at Union Station in La Grange, Mutton Jeff's in Lorraine, Red Iron Bar &amp; Grill in Wellington, and Your Pit in Vermillion. And if you remember from last year, Red Iron actually held the throne, or the crown, if you will, as the King of Wings. And they saw, all year long, they saw an increase in wing sales.
Nice.
I think at one point, they gave me some numbers in terms of the increase in poundage, but it was more than double.
Nice.
The wings that they were going through a month. How we spread the word, we, of course, used three different tactics, but grassroots. So, we went to the restaurants, and we went to their normal clientele. We had them put something up on Facebook. We, of course, used our Facebook audience. We had all of the staff armed with scripts. We, of course, used word of mouth, people that have participated in the past. Things like table tents, posters, and things on menus really, really helped. Believe it or not, the table tents just drive it home. And what we did this year different is we actually put the restaurant's specialty wings on the table tent. That got them talking a little bit. It was a little bit more customizable, not as generic. We did our earned media, of course, which was stories that we naturally got through our print media partners, our radio partners, WEOL, WOBL, Morning Journal, The Chronicle, also our partner Q104, and we did get mentions on a podcast and programming from WOIO, which is our Cleveland TV's partner. We also did paid media, traditionally Facebook, digital advertising. Radio and geofencing have done very, very well for us. In this case, it was no different. And we actually targeted our audience. We targeted men and women. Digital display, again, we did a group buy of different channels, which you'll see some of, just a sampling of some of them. Behavioral targeting, which means people that have worked with us in the past, people that have come to our events, we targeted them, and then we found people that looked like them. And the geofencing, which is a tactic I love, was we dropped a virtual net around different winged places or casual eateries in the area. Here's just a few samplings of the different digital displays. What we've learned over the years is that it really works better if you see movement, so you can see the dynamic ads there because of the Wi-Fi connection. I'm not really connected, so you're not seeing all of them, but they rotate through three different samples there. And I can see them flash a little bit. That just seems to catch people's eye and increase our click-through rate. Here's actually a drill down of some of the geofencing locations. Quaker Steak &amp; Lube in Vermillion did really well in terms of the click-through rates. So, if you look at the impressions delivered, that's the number of people that actually were delivered our ad. So, it was people that either went onto the Internet or went onto Facebook while they were at those locations.
Quaker Steak Avon, is that supposed to be Sheffield Village?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you. Yeah, so basically, what has happened is they continue to get delivered our ads through the course of the campaign, once they've kind of pulled that trigger by opening whatever app, Instagram, Facebook, or Safari, or whatever their browser would be. So, you can see the number of impressions delivered, and then the number of clicks. And the click-through rate are people that actually saw that impression and then made a click. So, it's just drilling it down to a percentage to be able to manage it. So, it was very interesting which places did well, and that just, again, helps us do better next time. In terms of how our ads did, you can see that Facebook continues to be the number-one source of impressions and click-through rates for us. So, we tried something a little different this year, as we actually created a Facebook ad, a boost, an event, and we boosted that post. So, that did really, really well for us. So, that's something that we're going to incorporate into the rest of our campaigns. To drill it down for you, we did, you know, this campaign did well in terms of how it delivered. We drove about 4,000 people to our website in a matter of one month. And so, that was a really nice traffic number. And 3,100 of those approximately were first-time visitors to that landing page, which means that they did not participate in the King of Wings competition last year, or have any interaction with us through the Wing Battle. I actually wrote down here, this is the 2019 data, overall votes, 131 votes. And I'm going to actually touch on this on the next slide and kind of compare the data to help. Visits, 384 visits to the restaurants. Wings sold, 1,175. We have one restaurant that has not reported, and we've knocked on doors, we've texted, we've emailed, we've called, but the point person has left. So, we're really having a difficult time getting that data. And you can see, this is really interesting, because I'm going to compare it at the next slide. Majority of people that participated in this year's King of Wings dined at two or more restaurants, and then four or more restaurants. The number of people going to different restaurants has significantly increased from last year. Now, as we look at 2018, the most important thing I can note is, because of some of the things that happened last year with the battle, we changed the policy so you have to try two or more wings. So, this, to me, was really interesting. If you look at overall number of votes, 485 last year. But if you look at those votes, 472 of them only went to one restaurant, which we know what we saw, someone, you know, some of the bigger restaurants, people came in and they just gave them a ballot. And that's not what the spirit of this campaign is about. So, it's really, truly to get people engaged, to try to find the best wings in Lorraine County, try as many different places, and get to know and more familiar with different restaurants. So, I feel really, although our numbers are lower in terms of votes, I'm really happy that we actually nailed the spirit of the campaign this year. I think we did a really good job. As you can see, if you looked at 18, only 10 people, that was the most, other than the one restaurant, dined at seven or more. And the number of wings that we sold overall increased. And I will tell you, Forts is the restaurant that did not report. They do a lot of business, so we're missing a pretty significant number. Here, you can break down the wings sold by restaurant. What we can figure out with this is there's a couple different factors in terms of the differentiating factors in the number of wings. One, people look and they study. We can tell this from the time they spend on our landing page. They study the different recipes of these wings, or the different descriptions, and they go where they want to find, where that wing strikes them. So, the presentation really, really matters. Also, what does matter is how well the staff does in executing and selling it. So, you can see some differentials in here, and how well the restaurant embraces it as well. Do they put social media posts up? So, in terms of voting, like I said, I touched on this. What happens is the diners get their passports, they go to different places. In order for their vote to count, they must eat at, or they must try two or more wings. And the diners can only vote for one establishment, only one vote per person. So, again, we went through all of the votes. We did random spot checks to make sure that they're real people. And, you know, we looked at all the different things. We actually got a lot of feedback this year. Overall, for the second year in a row, Red Iron has the best wings in Lorraine County. They are the king of wings. And really, they just, they owned it. They really, really just won hands down. So, we're really happy for them, and they are really excited. Overall, we asked the restaurants, "How did this go for you?" Because we want them to be engaged and continue to get excited about our campaigns. All of the restaurants felt it was successful and would participate again. We did see that they, again, got a 10% to 15% increase in traffic, and I liked it, in 5% to 10% increase in revenue. Some of these questions I ask for their benefit, to help connect the dots. So, it's important for them to see, oh, we did see an increase in traffic. In terms of consumer feedback, once again, this event, more so than the others, gets these diehards, these people that are like, "We went to this one, and we went to this." They really, really, really are engaged. So, it's interesting to see this diehard group grow from last year. And the one thing I will say is, in most places, because I did a lot of spot checks, the staff did a better job of explaining the King of Wings. Just from watching and seeing, the table tents prompted people to ask as well. So, having customizable table tents, to me, is something that's pertinent and very, very important in executing a great campaign. Now, we tried something different, and for the prize, to incentivize people to turn in their cards and vote, we offered free wings for a year, which was really a gift certificate for the equivalent of a pound of wings from each place. And because we had so many people, we did a random number generator and picked a random winner, and that's Tom Stats from Illyria, who visited six restaurants.
Nice.
So, can I answer any questions?
Great job.
Yeah, very good, Jen. I had folks who, when Commissioner Kokowski and I would visit for wings and we'd post it, I had friends who said, "Oh, we've gone to this one, we've gone to that one, you have to try these." So, there is a lot of enthusiasm for the program, which is great, that should help grow it for next year.
Yes.
Did you guys get torched at one of them?
Oh, the Foundry.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, my gosh.
That was like eating fire.
It was the hottest wing I ever had.
She warned us. They're hot. And, well, she wasn't kidding.
People that are really into wings do like them.
Yes.
I remember you guys posting something about how hot they were.
Gallons of water, teary eyes, hiccups, nose running.
I was hiccuping, like, I feel like I drank all afternoon. They were so hot, they gave me the hiccups.
Yes.
Yes.
But they were good.
Yes.
They were good.
They were tasty though.
Actually, it was interesting, this year, we did see a, everybody leaned to the more spicier side.
Okay.
And we got that as feedback. I think Forts had a grilled lime one that was not as spicy. There was a few not spicy ones, but a lot of people commented on how spicy all the wings were this year.
Don't even ask, can you tone it down for ours? Oh, no, it's mixed.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, so I'm excited for Red Iron to be the second year in a row to hold that crown.
Yes.
That really says something. They're doing something right over there.
And you said he's got red hair, and he was an ironworker at the steel mill, and that's how they came up with the name?
Yes.
Nice.
Yes, Reds. His nickname is Red.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
It's cool.
Yeah, so if you haven't visited, make sure to stop in. They're really running a great show over there.
Great.
So, thank you.
Thank you for all the work.
Let's, oh, no, 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 no. Let's talk a little bit about the Best of Lorraine County while I have you here. I know you're working on that with our partners. We have, what, just about two weeks?
August 1st.
August 1st. August 1st, yes.
So, let's seamlessly plug this thing.
Okay. It's actually, tickets are going fast. We are getting closer and closer to a sell-out, so we're really excited. This is an anniversary celebration, and so we're trying a few new things. We're actually going to have some of our partners pull up food trucks in front of the college there. And the college has been such great partners, so we're really happy to expand this event. We're also talking about oversized games. If you've ever seen, we talked about an oversized Jenga, an oversized Light Bright, and oversized Red Solo Cup throw game. I forget the name of it. Forgive me. But, so it's going to be a lot of fun. Again, we're having some music, and it's just, we're really excited about what we're doing this year. And we encourage everyone to get their tickets now. The timeline is a little further back, so it's going to be a fun event.
We moved to August 1st this year to give us a little more breathing room. We don't like to get too far in August because of the fair, but we're trying to drink more families out. We have an older crowd that comes out for this event. Each year, we're trying to add more. I think next year, we definitely got to get an outside area to bring out more family events, to bring the numbers out. It gets very crowded inside very, very quickly. So, we got to start earlier. And I think, you know, in January, I know that our partners sometimes are reluctant to start talking about it in January, because we're working on the Mardi Gras already, we're working on the visitor's guide. But I think we need to tend some of those parking lots and bring activities for the families, and do it in conjunction with, you know, some of the other things that we've talked about, the cornhole tournament, or some of those type arrangements, so that we make it more, you know, a gala than that, and maybe bring it towards a weekend event rather than a... But we have a problem with the vendors during the week. I will tell you that. It's going to be reluctance, because they don't want to do Fridays and Saturdays, because it's their big night. So, we tend to look at a Tuesday, Wednesday, and even that's a little bit of a struggle, because they're getting ready for their most, you know, busiest times of the week. So, you know, we're caught in the crosshairs of conflicting needs and timeframes. But we'll be, we'll be out there, and what are we targeting, 800 this year?
Usually. I mean, I forget this total sell-out number, but it's between 800 and 1,000, and we're close. Ticket sales are going faster this year than they have in the past.
You want to get a little tidbit about the Mardi Gras in February?
Could I interject, too? I have had people asking me recently, "Are you doing that big event again? That Mardi Gras was great." There is still a lot of buzz about the job you did back last March, so I think it's important we just keep talking about it and getting ready.
We've actually already started planning. We've got our partners, Lorraine County Community College, we've been working with them, and all of our member partners. So, we actually had a meeting with someone about some promo videos, and so, planning for Mardi Gras, we actually have dates set. So, and of course...
Go ahead, put the save the date out. We already booked the act. Come on, let's do it. Come on.
I can't do anything without my calendar here. But we know that we're doing Mardi Gras. We are excited about how big it is. Bear with my old eyes here, as I try to find my dates.
Put her on the spot.
Yeah, I know.
It's okay. It's a Saturday after Fat Tuesday.
Yep, which would be, I believe it's February 29th.
Nice.
If I have, I have on my hair.
We already booked the act.
Is it tears in your ear?
Yes, it is. Okay.
Yay!
So, it's, you know, it's little teasers, where it's already in the works. So, it'll be the second annual. There's a lot going on. There's a lot of moving pieces there. So, you know, we're going to, we're going to get it out there early, so people can start getting ready. And if you think it was good last year, it's going to be even better this year.
We've had lots of partners contact us and say, "How can we get in? How can we get in at a Mardi Gras?"
Nice.
So, we're expecting it to be bigger and better, and we learned from all of our first years. And, yes, we have the concert coming back, so we're excited.
And we're going to do a promo video of Commissioner Sweater and Commissioner Kokowski running around the stage.
Playing spoons?
No, they were playing the...
Spoons.
The washboards. Somehow, they left Commissioner Lundie out of that, and I'm not sure how. He snuck off the stage before.
He's still crying about it.
Something about not having rhythm, I thought.
That's very true.
I'm sure that video has tried to be hid, been tried to be hidden, but maybe we can dig it up.
So, thank you for that. So, when we have more, I like to get some things out on the Best of Lorraine County here for the next week or two of our meetings, so we can, we can do some plugs on that. You can get that over to my office, okay?
We also are still doing the scoop, the ice cream.
Yes, here's, the scoop is ongoing, and thank you for that. Here's the scoop, will continue through Labor Day. So, get your passports, stop in and get your passports. It's a lot of, it's a great family fun. Easy, go at your own pace.
We did Antiques last summer. Did that not do well? Are we not going to participate in the antique show?
The Shoreline Treasures, we are doing that again. That is actually designed to be an ongoing trail. Go at your own pace, self-guided is what we're calling it. So, we are continuing to promote our antique and specialty shopping trail.
Okay.
And actually, it's nice, because we've seen a whole new level of enthusiasm. People are saying, "Let's set a date and come to town," on our Facebook posts and everything like that. So, yes, that's ongoing.
Have we spoke to the Firefish people?
I have met with them, yes, but...
They've been, they've been annoying, as usual. So, we need to have a conversation, okay? And the other thing, there's a new restaurant opened up in La Grange, a new kind of English pub, Irish pub thing. Can we get somebody down there to meet and greet with them?
Absolutely, on it.
It's on Main Street down there, and I think it'll be great to be a new member.
Great.
Introduce ourselves, and I'll give you a call on Firefish, okay?
Okay. I think we're meeting next week, so.
Great.
I'll add it to my agenda.
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
Am I saying annoying? I mean, in a good way.
Clarification.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Ready? I'm ready. You ready?
Sure.
Okay. Let her rip.
Under resolutions and one of the amendments?
So move.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sweater?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So move.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sweater?
Aye.
Transfers?
So move.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sweater?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So move.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sweater?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet from a place within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
County Administrator Jim Cordez, good morning.
Good morning, sir. I do have several personnel issues, potential hires, 911, maintenance, collection center. I have received a notice to negotiate from United Steel Workers of America with Job and Family Services. I wish to discuss that. We had anticipated that coming. We're in the window. Also, still working on purchase of real estate. I want to update you on that. One pending legal matter, so we need to discuss that. For the moment, I think that may be it. So, all of those issues are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion. So, I'd ask, at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive session, and we discuss those matters that I've explained. Thank you.
Approval and the reading of the minutes are June 26, July 10, 11, and 16.
So move.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sweater?
Aye.
Authorized payment of $1,000 to La Grange Mercado, funeral home Illyria for Inogen veteran Michael Stenawski, Illyria in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 5901.25.
So move.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sweater?
Aye.
Adopt the fiscal year 2020 Lorraine County tax budget and prove a submitted tax...
So move.
Second? Discussion.
You want to just explain a little bit of, you know, the big time with the budget comes when we do the annual appropriations. The tax budget is required by code. It's more a wish list than anything else. Some of the outside agencies are in the tax budget that we don't have a lot of oversight over, but they're required by law to be included in the overall tax budget. We did update the mental health and drug and alcohol, combined them together into one budget for the tax budget. Since at 6 o'clock yesterday, they were a combined agency, and legally, they cannot have, couldn't have separate budgets under the old names. But this is more in compliance with the Ohio Revised Code. It's, strangely enough, is out of sync with when the annual appropriations happen, which is year-end, when all the roll-up-your-sleeves work is actually happening in the budgetary process. So, some people get confused as to the process. But I think that, Commissioner Lundie, you mentioned that, you know, coming in the next year, we want to do a little bit more work during tax budget time.
Yeah, well, I guess I would just, you know, ask my colleagues to consider. I think that, you know, we should have individuals come in and explain, you know, what they're seeking in their budget, why they're seeking it.
It's, strangely enough, is out of sync with when the annual appropriations happen, which is year end, when all the roll-up-your-sleeves work is actually happening in the budgetary process. So, some people get confused as to the process. But I think that, Commissioner Lundie, you mentioned that, you know, coming in the next year, we want to do a little bit more work during tax budget time.
Yeah, well, I guess I would just, you know, ask my colleagues to consider, I think that, you know, we should have individuals come in and explain, you know, what they're seeking in their budget, why they're seeking it. And, you know, since we have the ultimate responsibility of making the final decisions here, I think that would be very good as far as being transparent to the community, so they clearly know why people are asking for this or asking for that. And it provides for a transparent process as well.
So, what I would anticipate, you know, beginning in, in early spring next year, because the tax budget takes a while, there's steps in it that will start looking towards expanding that process, if that's suitable to the board.
Done that in the past.
Mr. Lundie.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sweater.
Aye.
Community Development, a war proposal to Coldwater Consulting LLC, an alien of amount of nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Nine thousand nine hundred dollars for the Fortune Ditch Stream Restoration Project Long-Term Maintenance Plan.
So move.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Lundie.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sweater.
Aye.
Job and Family Authorized Maintenance and Support Services Agreement, CGI Technologies and Solutions, seeing for supportive applications. Software, software updates of the Document Imaging Department effective retroactive for July first, two thousand nineteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, now to exceed a value of seventeen thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars, and authorized director to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors for proposed form.
So move.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Lundie.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sweater.
Aye.
Solid Waste, adopt the Solid Waste Management Plan in accordance with the Ohio Risk Code thirty-seven thirty-four point fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five.
So move.
Second? Discussion.
Yeah, just a brief overview. We, we reached sixty-eight percent. I want to thank those cities, townships, villages. Let's not, I'm gonna catch everybody. I won't name them. There's a lot of them that passed resolutions, ordinances, et cetera, support the plan. Not everybody needed to do that. The ones that stepped forward more quickly so we could meet our deadlines, I want to thank them. Specifically, I want to thank Elyria and Lorraine. It's a little harder to move things through their councils, because they're much larger and they have a bigger share of the bite. Lorraine was a mandatory partner, as the largest city. Surprisingly, they stepped to the plate with little resistance and, and passed the plan. There was a lot of questions of our representative, but at the end of the day, it was unanimous vote on, on the plan. And then Elyria came in right behind them. While we could have passed the plan without Elyria, I felt it very strongly that we needed Elyria along with, with Lorraine, because of their size. And so, they, they were able to, just before council went into summer recess, they passed theirs also. And so, we reached the number that we needed, and with the board of the vote here, it goes to the Solid Waste Committee, Advisory Committee. Once they, they, they pass a vote, then it'll go to the, to the EPA for final ratification. And then we'll have our new five-year plan. This is probably as smooth as the process has gone over the few times that we've had to pass this. So, I want to thank the community and the commissioners and everybody involved. We got it through with, with almost no hiccups this time. Usually, it's, there's, there's some changes and some disturbances, but almost nothing this time. So, great job. Thank you.
Good.
We were having some discussion this morning, just about what is recyclable and what isn't recyclable, and possibly a video or something on that order to tell people what can be thrown in the garbage and what could be thrown.
The problem, Commissioner, it's, it's, it's really wicked. I, you know, I, I know more about sewage than I want to know. I know more about stormwater than I want to know. Now I'm beginning to know more about trash than I want to know. It's, it's, every hauler, it's a bit different. Every recycling center, it's a bit different, and...
That's why there's so much confusion out there.
There is. And I just got word, yes, I was going to speak with you guys sometime during the week, as I see you when we were all working. Lorraine just indicated that they're pulling out of the Ohio EPA grant with doing that inspection and education, the pass-through grant we did for them, because of a late start and the inability of their waste hauler to accelerate the work with them. So, we're gonna lose that big grant that we just worked through on a pass-through to them, and I'll speak more to that with you. The, 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 we, we've tried to get stickers to put on the containers, but then the stickers aren't in conformity with what the hauler is recycling or taking to various locations. People are confused. I'm confused, and we run, run the department. I find out what I was recycling actually was being taken out of the, out of the recycling place and thrown away. It was being resorted, and I thought I was doing a good job recycling. I, I, I need to sit down with people that are smarter than me and figure out how we can try to get the word out. But even within our own community, with two or three different haulers in the community, with two or three different requirements, it, it, it's, it's a mixed message. And so, I'm not sure how to do that in our community to get that, the proper message out, but we have to start somewhere. And, and that may be it. We may have to target, target those communities with, with better messaging. Commissioner Lundie has long talked about that. But remember how many times we talked about the stickers on the cans, and then we couldn't figure out which communities got which stickers? And, and then, then of course, the, the haulers changed their policies periodically. So, how, what do we do? Go back and change the stickers over and over again that we put on, on the waste cans, telling people what goes in and what doesn't go in? You know, for example, if you've got a pizza box and it's got a little bit of pizza oil in it, they don't want the box in your cardboard. Because it contaminates all the cardboard.
And they don't want you to put your bottles or cans inside of a plastic bag and then put that plastic bag in the garbage.
Right, they don't want the plastic bag anymore.
And no cap on the bottle.
And no cap on the bottle.
And some of the labels have to come off.
Yeah, it, it's, it's, it's becoming more difficult, I think, for the community to embrace the recycling. I think they want to.
They do.
And, and in the city of Lorraine, we finally went to the court system after many, many years of, of challenges up there. And I think the administration up there, it took a really big beating when they went to the court system up there, yet it's failing miserably because they're bringing in so much unsorted waste out of, out of Lorraine right now that, that is, it's crippling the recycling center out there in, in Calhoun Township, to the point where they're thinking about shutting it down. But yet, we, we got this pass-through grant to, to inspect and educate. What they were supposed to do is go check out the recycling cans and tag them. So, it wasn't to cite people, it was to tag the can and let people know that, that the unsorted waste or the different things people thought recyclable actually weren't. And now that grant's not gonna get off the ground. And if we don't improve things soon, we're, we're going to end up with less recyclables and more in the landfill.
Again, we're going backwards.
It is, because when we first, when I first got here back, back in oh-five, our goal was to get to twenty-five percent.
Right.
And we far out exceeded that twenty-five percent. Now they're looking to do thirty-five percent. And with all this uncertainty, I don't see how we're gonna be able to reach that.
Well, you know, a couple things, some, some things that we are doing right now. I met yesterday, and we're looking at our Twenty-Eighth Street facility. We talked about a second facility. We're gonna do a lot more cardboard and paper, because we got that big compactor that we installed. Well, we need to feed that, and with the, with the city of Lorraine going to their new maintenance facility, you know, they're actively looking for that. We want to open up, we want to move out to our own tire facility in Lorraine. We've always kind of shared a piece of their maintenance facility. But we'll start collecting a lot more recyclables on our own secondary facility on Twenty-Eighth and Lorraine. So, I met yesterday to start that process of moving that project. What we're gonna have to do is start collecting more ourselves, or have drop-off points more ourselves, the old method that, that we used thirty years ago. So that people that truly want to recycle have someplace to take those recyclables. Because there's a lot of people more committed to that than others. You know, and of course, the commissioners have been at the forefront of battling this yard waste issue with some of these haulers, because they're getting waivers on the yard waste issue, which is another digression of where we've come in the last thirty years. I think we're gonna have a hard time meeting these targets. The, and I think part of the problem is that the market for recyclables has been very soft. It hasn't improved. The technology hasn't gotten where everybody thought it would in thirty years. I was having a talk yesterday about, I remembered thirty years ago, people were gonna buy tires. We're still paying to have them hauled away, but the future thirty years ago was we'd be selling tires, not paying to have them taken away thirty years later. And that never happened. And the list goes on and on of what everybody predicted would happen in the recycled environment and, and in the business community, and most of those technologies did not advance or the communities did not embrace those things fully enough to bring it down to a cost-effective method. It is very hard to get rid of recycled materials right now, and exporting them has become even a challenge. It used to export a lot of those recyclables, and other nations don't want them even anymore. So, it's, it's gonna, going to get worse before it gets better.
I do want to commend our solid waste department too, because they have been working with less staff than what they're used to and not having an actual director there. So, congratulations on getting all this put together. Appreciate it.
So, we'll, we'll work on the, we'll work on this with the center. And we need, we need, we need our landfill operator to start coming to the solid waste meetings. I know Commissioner Lundie's been working on that. He's our rep to the solid waste board, and I know you've communicated with them, Commissioner.
Yep. Yeah, Republic Services, for some reason, refuses to come to our solid waste board meetings. They should be there. They're the ones running the, you know, the landfill and...
And the, and the recycling center.
And the recycling center, and, you know, and I think the residents should be, you know, very upset. The state of Ohio's allowing them to, to bring in yard waste from outside of this county to that landfill. And there's absolutely no excuse for that whatsoever. And quite frankly, shame on the EPA of Ohio for making that possible. And I really think that if Republic truly wanted to, they could have found a, a place to take that yard waste. But, so, there's some little games going on here, but we're going to continue to drill down and get to the bottom of it, because we won't tolerate games of that nature.
Especially with the longevity projections for the, the landfill. I mean, it's a clear and present issue. So, we do need to have them at the table, and we have to have good conversations on how we're gonna solve some of the current problems and the future.
Mr. Lundie.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sweater.
Aye.
Approve the two thousand nineteen community incentive grant funding in amount of four hundred and twenty thousand, request for the year two thousand nineteen.
So move.
Second?
I, Tiffany's here. Can we do a little?
Sure.
Ready, Tiffany?
Sure. Come on up, either one, whichever side you feel more comfortable.
I, I went through the grants last week, and then sat with Tiffany yesterday, went through them. Some really good grant applications this year. I believe that we've, over the last two years, we've, we've actually improved the process.
We have streamlined it quite a bit.
Tightened it down. You know, a couple of years ago, we had a lot of, a lot of problems in these grants. I don't think we'll be seeing those problems. And then, we're going out again after this board meeting. We, we have a pretty, pretty stringent cover letter explaining the details and facts again, because I don't want any hiccups at the end of these, these grants that we've experienced before. But, the communities have demonstrated through the application, I think they get the message that we've, we've sent. So, feeling really good about the process this year, but if, maybe you can run through a couple of the communities and the grants and...
We have a unique list of communities that are thinking outside the box. So, some of the sample projects, we have one community that's focusing on ADA tables. I think that's one of those things that just kind of falls to the wayside when you're thinking of a, a public venue. So, we're very excited to have a community that's stepping up to the plate on that. And we also have Avon Lake that's doing recycled decking and railings. They have done tremendous improvements to their public spaces, and they're expanding on that with this grant. We also have, I think it was Elyria Township, that is, they were able to find a vendor that has recycled content garage door panels for their fire department. So, again, thinking outside the box and really doing their due diligence for finding a vendor that can help them meet their needs on, on practical needs. And they're setting the bar high for all the other communities and for the residents to think outside the box as well. And in, in regards to our recycling problem and our contamination rates, we have asked the communities to contribute up to ten percent of their awarded allocation towards advertising. I think one of the best ways that we can address this, because it really is a very fluid market these days, and we just don't know from one month to the next how it's gonna impact us. If we focus on online and social media, so that we're not investing a lot in print and on stickers and so forth, that we can change that message on the fly and really help our residents, our communities, and take away that excuse for the recycling facilities, because we're giving them a better product and not so much contamination. Something to think about going forward, anyway.
The, the, with, with these grants for, for folks that, that aren't aware, there's a really large amount of areas they can take these funds into. But what it does is, it, it, it goes to the, the needs of their communities and their trustees or their administration, whether it be city council or village council or village mayors. They spend it for the good of their community. Some spend it on garage doors, some spend it on picnic tables, pavilions. Benches for the parks. It, it's really a very varied amount of things that they choose to use it on, but it's injecting money back into the community. And these funds come from tipping fees at the landfill. So, this is money that comes back into their local community based upon recycling efforts within the community. So, their efforts bring money back...
Exactly. Education, education, education.
Into that local community. So, as well as recycling goes, that's how well these grants go back into the communities. And so, a lot of the things you'll see, you know, for instance, it's very visible in downtown Elyria. They have those big recycle planters that have been, you've seen pop up.
And they're beautiful.
They are, and those were in the Elyria grant this year. And so, they were able to be procured with grant dollars and beautify the downtown area. Those are the kind of things that usually are not doable with the limited resources in cities and villages' general funds, but that can be done with recycled dollars and recycled content in those planters. So, that's why we gotta work harder on those things and bring more money back to these communities. Good job on these grants, and appreciate the...
Thank you, Tiffany.
The, the process went through. Did we find out about the, the carry forward in Sheffield Lake from Mike? Did we have a chance to talk to him? Okay, I just wanna, so we're gonna hold on that one, right? We pulled that out of the package on Sheffield?
Yeah.
Sheffield Lake. Sheffield Lake had acts to, they, they, they want to apply their funding to a leaf vac machine they got. It was like seventy thousand dollars with everything. I pulled it because I don't know how many times they want to...
Roll.
Roll, and I'm a little concerned that that's almost like a pre-approval going so many years forward. And I want to talk to Mike about that. And we still have two communities outstanding without applications?
Technically, two. One, we should be getting any time now. They met on Monday evening, their, their township trustees. And the other is kind of up in limbo. They're trying to decide on what they want to purchase with their...
Did we, did we get the last one from the hall?
Sheffield Village.
Did that come in? I know they were working on it. Did it come in?
Yeah, it did.
All right, is it in the package, or?
I've got two that I need to give you, yeah. Brownham Township is still out, and I think it was Pittsfield or Pensfield.
Yeah, Pittsfield was Monday night, though. They, they didn't...
I don't have it yet.
Okay, well, we'll work with them. We'll make sure everybody gets what they need to get. You know, I'm more concerned getting reports that they need than getting, you know, we'll, we'll spank them a little bit on the timeline because I wanted to do this all together, but most of the communities came through pretty good. And I want to thank Bill for his application, because he always writes everything in his application. And I know the requirements. I'm gonna make sure I comply with them, so. So, it's good when we have partners in the community that make it easy for us to review these things very quickly. So.
And we try to make ourselves as accessible as possible to all the representatives in the community for questions and, and direction and guidance.
You do a good job.
Okay. Tiffany, did Sheffield Village stay with the camera idea? Do you know?
Hang on. They did not.
They did not, okay.
They did not. They are replacing the roof for the baseball dugouts. They're doing a lot with their sports fields.
Okay, good.
They're gonna use recycled roof content and things like that?
Absolutely. It's a requirement that everybody submit their documentation showing the proof of recycled content, because that's a requirement for Ohio EPA.
Right.
We make sure everybody documents it properly.
I had to call Tiffany yesterday. I'm like, recycled toilet paper and paper towels, really? What there is?
There's a lot out there.
Believe it or not, most paper towel material...
Yeah.
Is, is recycled paper content.
Right.
It, for, has been long before recycling was a big thing. It was made out of recycled pulp.
Recycled toilet paper?
Yeah.
It's a thing. It's a thing.
It's not, it's not the toilet paper that's recycled. It's paper content recycled. Let's just be clear on that. So, all's good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Lundie.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sweater.
Aye.
Under Domestic Relations, approve funding request of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-four cents from Victim of Crime Act, State Victim Assistance Act grant to provide training backward, background checks for volunteer guardian annals and salaries for program manager, volunteer coordinator, and program aid for choices of children. No County General Fund required.
So move.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Lundie.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sweater.
Aye.
Public comment?
Those wishing to make a public comment this morning, you have three minutes. Morning, Mr. Phillips.
Good morning.
Good morning. Gerald W. Phillips, address four six one Winward Way, Avon Lake, Ohio. I guess I'll make a little report. Yesterday, I met with Commissioner Sweater and Kirkowski. They took the opportunity to meet with me based on some comments I made at previous meetings on, on certain topics. I thought it was a positive meeting, informational. It was an introduction meeting, and I think there was a general interest to pursue it and talk more about it. We talked about the four topics that I mentioned, the plastic bags, the tax certificates, the Lorraine County Port Authority, and the Lorraine County Development Department. We left the meeting with a consensus that I was, I was going to get some additional information. Most of the additional information was going to be coming from myself. They were going to try to get some additional information. We, the topic of golden acres came up. We talked about when that additional meeting would occur. I suggested after a commissioner's meeting. Commissioners indicated that, that probably wouldn't be feasible because they go into executive session and that goes a long time. So, I made a comment that I haven't sued the commissioners lately, so I don't know why the, you know, legal matters aren't reduced. But anyway, I thought, we didn't pick it, we didn't pick it, we didn't pick a time or date. Commissioner Lundey couldn't attend, he indicated that he was interested. So, I throw this out for a possibility and you can get back to me. There's a second public hearing on subdivision regulations, I don't think you'll have a, an executive session. So, barring conflicts and schedules, both on, on your part and my part, we can do that on that day. Second point is, the persona of my reputation and, you know, in the public. I want to share an, an experience with a client of mine. This client first saw me at an Avon Council meeting, saw me in action, and he eventually hired me and I've been with him for 20 years. And he shared this comment with, on numerous occasions with me. He says the public perception is I'm tough, hard-nosed, aggressive, zealous, abrasive, and difficult to deal with. But, he says, once I've gone into one-on-one meetings with him, with various banks, government departments, that there's a, a different side of me. You know, and he basically says, you come across smart, knowledgeable, intelligent, a problem solver, a compromiser. And people see what he calls the softer side of Jerry. And I think yesterday, maybe the commissioner saw a little bit of that. And I think another example is what I dealt with, the prosecutor, Jerry Ennis. And we dealt on a couple of difficult issues, the Redford sewers and the Mark Road sewers. Those, those were difficult issues. We dealt with sewer taps that dealt with, you know, compromising. And, and I represented the developers and we picked up, you know, we agreed to pick up all the taps for anybody we went across. We, you know, I think we compromised, we got a good deal for the citizens, developers, even though the negotiations were tough, we worked together.
If you could please summarize, Mr. Phillips, we're...
Well, I guess, I got some more comments, so I guess I'll make a point of order. You know, commissioners can extend the three minutes if they so desire, it's up to you.
Uh, we, we have this three-minute section for public comment, so it depends on what my colleagues want to do.
I'll share next meeting then. It's up to you.
And we'll be here next meeting, so, and I'm looking forward to the discussion with you.
I'll just make one comment, you know, you can weigh that, okay? And I know the purpose of it, okay? I attended those meetings in which it was resulted, so you make the choice.
Just want to be consistent, thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment this morning?
You've been consistent, because I'm sure I can get tapes and meet of things, republic things with more than three minutes, okay? All right?
Anyone else wishing to make public comment this morning? Seeing none?
Mr. Ennis, I mean, Mr. Gredes.
I don't get my three minutes either?
Nope.
Jerry, Jerry took your three minutes.
Took your three minutes.
You dictators. I do have one thing I want to do this morning. I actually wanted to do it last week and I didn't get it done. I need to get this resolution for the Montrose Group to do some work with us over the next 12 months. It's, 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 it's on a monthly basis, but it's also, Don can come up, he's here. But it's, it's by, it's not a, Don, I don't like the way it's written, it says 2,500 a month, but this is not 2,500 a month, it's by direction, right?
Correct, we'll be starting it and doling out what it is we want them to do.
Yes, by work.
Correct.
So, they don't, they don't get paid on a monthly basis whether they work or not, it's...
Right.
Yeah, the way it says, it's 2,500.
Yeah, that was the, as we were trying to define a scope, that was the best way we could kind of come up with it at the time, not knowing exactly which direction we were going to go.
Yeah, I, I would prefer, you have the resolution coming down, I would prefer that it says not to exceed $30,000.
Okay.
And then, the work is by assignment, okay?
Yes.
So, we, you know, we, we need them, we're working on a big project, I made you privy to that, we're under a non-disclosure on that big project. Working with a publicly traded company, so we, we definitely have to keep those non-disclosures right now. But we need the help of this company as we fashion some incentives going forward. The, we obviously won't need them the whole 12 months, but we need them right now.
Correct.
And, Dom was on vacation, so wasn't able to have this conversation, he only came back this morning.
This is the very big project that we're working on right now, which we'll be able to talk about later, hopefully if it comes to fruition.
I hope.
Not, not now.
But, but we, we need a little of this outside experience and, again, Don's looking refreshed this morning, I'll, I'll finish that off by the end of the day on him. The, but my apologies, but I couldn't talk, I didn't want to bother him in, before he came back. So, if you would be generous enough to pass this, would it not to exceed 30,000, I want to get busy on this.
30?
Yeah, to exceed the whole thing by 30,000.
Oh, okay. Do you want to make a motion?
I've heard that wording before. So move.
Second discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the ment, the new addiction services, mental health common and whatever, Board last night and the commissioners for getting it done.
They were cracking up. It's Mahrs, M-A-H-R-S or whatever, and Jinx is the person that works there, so she's going to say, hi, this is Jinx from Mars. So, it's going to be, it's going to be a funny thing when Jinx...
Well, we had, we had a little networking and fellowship before the meeting and everybody seemed pretty cheery. And I thought it was, it was, it was good, everybody seemed to like being in the room together. I'm glad we had, you know, a half hour, 45 minutes, the staff seemed rather upbeat. There was a lot of smiles and a lot of handshaking and people, hugs, and people looked like everybody was relieved that we were finally doing it and moving forward. So, congratulations to everybody on maintaining a positive spirit and look forward, and I think there's great work ahead. And you guys should be, I know there's been some negativity and some letters to the editor that are completely inaccurate, because nobody knows what goes on behind the scenes. And you don't respond to those type of, of unfounded allegations, but it was a hard slog for everybody, everybody involved in this. But it got done and the community's better for it.
Yep.
So, thank you. I yield now to counsel.
Thank you.
I do have one matter of pending litigation to discuss in the executive session.
I'll have to recap from last week, last Thursday, we had that emergency meeting to name the new board appointments to the Mental Health and Addiction Board. I too believe we have a strong board that after seeing their first meeting last night, I'm very encouraged that people suffering with mental health and addiction will be served well. Also attended my monthly stepping up meeting and there were a lot of discussions revolving around veterans. And there is a crisis phone number for people that are in crisis, for either the, the person themselves or their family member. And that number, which Hal's going to put up on the screen because I gave him a little card, is 1-800-273-8255. And if you press one, you will be linked with, some will deal with veterans issues, because a lot of their issues are unique needs. So, that number, press one, and it's, like I said, for families or the veteran themselves. Yesterday, we had our first public hearing in regard to buildings and planning and subdivision regulations. This is being done in partnership with the engineer's office and it should be beneficial to not only the county departments, but also dealing with the developers wanting to improve our community. So, I just want to thank Kristin Brandon for the work that she put into this project. And we will be having a second hearing on August 6 regarding subdivision regulations. So, that would be the end of my report.
Okay. Well, I'd also like to express how yesterday evening was a day of celebration. This county no longer has the distinction of being the last county with two separate boards. I hope we now have the distinction of being the best board in Ohio to provide services to those battling mental health and addiction. It's important to note that we're on pace to have close to 88, 90 people dying of overdoses this year, based upon the first six months. We're still close to almost 60 overdoses a month. Our suicide rate here in this county is above the state and national averages as it breaks down per capita. So, we still have a real, real problem here. But, the people on the board now are charged with the mission of, of bringing together the resources and the expertise to better serve the community. We're confident they will, they will do that. The only regret I have is that taxpayer money had to be wasted on attorneys instead of being spent to treat people who are in need of treatment. But now, it's time to, to move forward. So, we wish all the new members the very best and they have very important work ahead. And when you meet them, they're, they're a good group of folks and I'm just looking forward to getting the work of people done. The only other thing I really wanted to comment on this morning is just very disappointed to know that as we sit here, they'll be voting in the House and the Senate in Columbus today regarding whether there will be local control or continued state control. It looks like there will continue to be state control in the city of Lorraine over the school districts. With that said, I think it's important for people to know the facts, sometimes people say I'm making a political comment, but here are the facts. The fact, fact, the majority party drives the agenda in Columbus. Fact, the majority party controls the votes. Fact, the majority party is the Republican Party, controlling both the House and the Senate, controlling the votes. Senator Manning is in the majority, he has the votes. And to date, he and others have failed, they've failed the children, the families, and the community of Lorraine. Representative Manning and Representative Stein are in the majority, that's a fact. They have the votes to make the difference, to return local control. To this point, they've failed children, they've failed the families, they've failed the community of Lorraine. And now, Lorraine faces an even bigger crisis, potentially a financial crisis, because passing a levy without local control is going to be a very difficult sell to voters and will probably turn off voters, knowing that there's going to continue to be state control. We are told that there's going to be talks over the summer, knowing how Columbus works though, I don't see how this issue will be resolved before the start of the new school year. And, this was, this was a bad move by Governor Kasich, would have been very easy for all of these people and the new governor to say this was a bad idea by Governor Kasich. It's not working, it's very disruptive to the educational process in Lorraine and the students, and we're going to get rid of it. But they haven't done that. So now, as a result, Senator Manning, Representative Manning, Representative Stein, you now own this disastrous plan for the children of Lorraine and for the community. And you're hurting students by continuing to allow state control instead of local control. There is no parent in this county, there's no parent in this country, there's no parent anywhere who would want state government to have control over their school district instead of local control. And, so, obviously, I'm very disappointed, you can tell I'm upset about it, and the whole community should be upset about it. But it's so important for people to know where the responsibility lies. The votes are there, if they wanted to get it done, they could have gotten it done. I've seen it time and time again, when they want to get something done in, in Columbus, they have the votes to do it and they get it done. They did not finish the job. That completes my report.
Wow. And I have to echo what, what Commissioner Lundey says, and I think that we are seeing from that direction of the state, that propensity to usurp local control. We saw the efforts they made to usurp our control or our authority or influence even over something so simple as board appointments. So, I think we need to be vigilant and watch what our legislators are doing. Last week, we spent several full days working on just ironing out the merger resolution successfully, and I'm happy that's over. And we are at the juncture where we are. Last Thursday evening, I was in the Sheffield Lake Parade, meeting Sheffield Lake folks, it was a nice hot, hot day and very well attended. We vis, I visited the VA Clinic outpatient veterans appreciation event on Friday over on Abbey Road, that was well attended, very nice annual event. And Friday evening, I actually had my first visit this year to Rocking on the River, last year I had a lot of those. But, the Amherst class of 79 was doing a reunion meet and greet over there. I had a sister who flew in for that and got to see a lot of folks from all over the United States who came home. And their first stop was going to be Rocking on the River there in Lorraine and just impressed by what's going on in Lorraine. Most of them didn't even know that existed. Saturday evening was the Mexican Mutual Scholarship Steak Fry, that was well attended over at the Mexican Mutual Club. Sunday had several community events, the Amherst Village Fair had a classic car parade and a fair at their historical village, and that was really well attended. They were shuttling from nearby parking lots to get everybody in there. I was able to attend the 4800 Year Celebration at the Congressional United Church in Brownham. They had more of those delicious cookies they brought us last Wednesday. Sunday evening, Le Charmetts had Jazz on the Lake, that was a beautiful event. And for those who don't know, I had to Google Le Charmet, what, what exactly was the organization? And it was a Lorraine women's group that organized over 50 years ago with the intent of being a social group that provided scholarship money to students. And their scholarships have existed over the course of the club's existence and they grant scholarships to students in Lorraine, Elyria, and Oberlin. It was a nice event. Wellington on Monday, well, first of all, I want to shout out to Wellington, my gosh. The Traveling Wall left yesterday, so they had a full weekend of events with the Traveling Wall. We talked about last week how they won America's Main Street. Today, we hear that they have King of the Wings, two years in a boat, in a row. And I just think we have to keep eye on Wellington, a lot of good things happening out there. We did review the subdivision regs and one of the takeaways that I had after that meeting was the idea that this is a, a good problem to be working on because it's an indication of a stronger housing economy and the fact that the, we have cul-de-sac restrictions that we worked on indicating the fact that some of our more rural subdivisions are now seeing more concentrated housing.
Because of sewers.
Pardon?
Because of sewers.
Because of sewers and the fact that there is a housing demand for it as well, which is good. I didn't get a chance, he left, Gerald Phillips did take time to meet with us, I'll look forward to more comments and input from him. And then, my, my comments on our new merged board. First of all, I, I do want to say that it was worth all that toil and strife to get there. Last night, we witnessed a, a turn or a change of citing more cohesion and enthusiasm again. Everyone along this process seemed to visualize their own vision of how it was going to evolve and how those details would play out. We had two separate boards envisioning it in their own, from their own point of view. We had two directors who had their point of view, and you had three commissioners who at times... at times, we had different points of view on how that would play out. But everybody joined together, we worked for the resolution, and our ultimate conclusion was that we produced one of the, what I think is going to be one of the premier addiction and mental health boards in the state. I want to thank all the previous board members who put all their time and effort over the past decades to grow those organizations into two very strong entities. I'm hoping that we don't double their efforts, but we square their efforts. And finally, remind everybody that July 28, from 11:00 to 3:00, is the open house at our Transportation Center, Transportation and Community Center over on East Avenue. I think if you haven't been in that building, you'll be amazed to see the beautiful restoration job.
There's going to be trolley rides.
Trolley, yeah, there's going to be a lot going on for that.
Free finger food.
Yeah, free food, free food. So, everything that you would expect from an open house. So, please join us there, and that concludes my report.
Excuse me, Tuesday, the 23rd, at 11 o'clock, will be Investment Advisory Committee, Board Correspondents.
I would move that the reading be waived.
I'll second discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Siewa.
Aye.
Seeing no other business at this time, I would move that we go into executive session for the reasons stated by the county administrator and the assisting county prosecutor.
I'll second. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.